...to order and thank everyone for their attendance today. I would like to bring to everyone's attention that we have both Jessica and Shannon, both out on family vacation and will not be in attendance, and I hope they're enjoying themselves very much. We'll now start with our first presentation, the Neighborhood Special Service District Update, Herds Cove, Brock Cove, Bayville Creek. Dave, you want to introduce Phil?
Yes, sir. I would like to...
Jessica, Phil, go into it.
Yes, it's been awhile since you had an update on several of the Neighborhood Navigation Dredging SSD projects that we're working on, and today we have our Coastal Engineer, Phil Roors, to give us an update.
Very good. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. A brief overview, the four projects are listed here, but want to give you the programmatic look. We have seven districts that have been adopted. We've completed construction on four of those, one through four are complete. We're here today to seek your permission to add two more to the petition list. We'll get to those in shortly, and then we're going to go back, circle back with Dix Creek, another attempt for them to reach their 80%, which may very well be our 10th district. Here are all the projects on the map, pretty good distribution between the two branches and at Rudy Inlet. And here are the four we want to talk about today. First, we'll start with Herds Cove. We were here last June on Herds Cove and briefed you on the removal of 16 properties. At the time, and these were the properties in the uppermost reaches, I described them to you at the time as somewhat aspirational properties. These property owners wanted desperately to be included in the SSD, they wanted navigation, but they were just so far up in the wetlands, it was just impossible to get a permit to dredge, and so they were removed. We told you at the time we'd probably be back, and we're back, but regrettably circumstances have changed, and I need to explain myself. There are seven properties that are slated to be removed. Two of them are for environmental reasons up here, and then a group of five down at the very upstream limit of this project. There's a real estate issue, there is an unwilling property owner who has, heretofore, not been willing to sign a right-of-entry, which is required to allow the channel to get to those other five properties. Just yesterday, the neighborhood representatives were calling us, they seem to be reaching an agreement with this property owner, and they've asked, that I asked, that you not take action on the ordinance that we had put on your agenda, and that you defer it, and give them a chance to see if they can't work it out, and we could keep, potentially keep these five properties in the district. Most of them want to be in the district.
Do you want to defer?
Yes, sir, please. So, we'll be back, hopefully with less than seven. There's one other cove in this neighborhood that's still somewhat problematic, but the community wants us to go forward and include that cove, and in the end, if we can get a permit, great, and if we can't get a permit, we may end up having to come back one more time for another adjustment in the district.
Mr. Vice Mayor, that would be J4 requesting a deferral on Herds Cove, and that is in Mr. Woods' district, the Lynn Haven district.
So, next, we have...
I have a question about your tax...
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, this is, we're not going to deal with it, so you don't have answer for question, David. We're going to refund the money of the people who are being taken out, because this is already in effect.
Yes, ma'am.
But does this change the amount of the tax levies, since it's fewer properties?
You know, interestingly, no. This actually ends up being in the benefit of the project or the community that's paying for it. They're at the very end of the creek, it's, there's heavy mitigation costs to be able to dredge through these channels. They're lovely properties, I would love to live there, but they're not the most expensive properties in the district, those would be those down here, so removing the revenue generation, and at the same time removing rather high costs, actually turns out to be a net benefit for the SSD. So, on to Brock Cove, this is a new project to you, we've been meeting with the neighborhood, we briefed them, the community, in February. Our habit and our custom is to come to you and tell you that we've been meeting with these neighborhoods, that we have a potential project, and we're now at the point of formally petitioning them. So, before we formally petition them, we want to introduce you to the project, make sure you're aware of it, and actually, if we can get a head nod, we'd feel more comfortable. These petitions are actually, obviously, dealing with their taxes, and we're asking them a question, do you want your taxes raised? So, we feel it's important to come to you before we do that. This would have 76 potential participants. The rate is pretty steep, at 48.8 cents per hundred. The community is aware of that, as I said, we briefed them in February, they've stated to us that at least 50% of them want to go forward, and that's our trigger point, to come and ask you for permission to petition and get the process formally rolling. Similarly, Buchanan Creek West, we're calling it, has, we briefed them, we briefed them last in May, yes, in May. This is a much reduced Buchanan Creek project. We had scoped out a Buchanan Creek project, we'd gotten permission to petition, we petitioned them, and they were unable to get their 80%. It was a much larger project that went well upstream quite a bit. This is a narrower-focused project with a group of people thought to be ready to do it. So, again, this is 70 participants, and again, the rate is fairly significant, at 48.5 They're willing to be petitioned, they're telling us that at least half in the neighborhood, or half the affected participants, are willing to do the program, and again, that triggers our petition process, and we're here today to tell you that we're prepared to petition, and without objection or with your approval, we'd like to go ahead and do that on these two projects. Finally, a brief update on Bayville. You may recall that there's been some input from the neighborhood about the new tax rate, the new SSD rate that was established in your FY '18 budget. In response, and after meeting with them and discussing with them, the manager has offered them a couple of alternatives, a letter was sent in a Friday package, I believe, a copy of the letter went to Bayville. So, we want to let you know that we've given them a couple of alternatives, we've asked them to give us a consensus position of the neighborhood, and when we have that, our intention would be to calendar an item for your consideration, to perhaps modify their SSD rate again. The things they're looking at are things like only doing two dredgings instead of three, as a method to reduce their cost. That is the brief, and again, we're...
Thank you, Phil. Any questions or comments from anybody? Barbara?
I do, I'm sorry, Buchanan, back on that, I've been thinking, and I can't get straight. If they fail to reach the 80%, now we're going to go back out with another petition on a smaller...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've done this before, we're doing it again with Dix Creek, we got your permission, and we formally petitioned the Dix Creek neighborhood. They were unable to reach 80%. They met amongst themselves, they decided what changes they need to make in their project, and they feel like they have a viable project now, and they're asking us to rebrief them, which we've done, and to get permission from council to petition them again.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Phil, we thank you very much for your presentation.
Very good. Do I take that as an okay to go forward with Brock and Buchanan Creek West?
Right on.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Cafe franchise amendment, Mike Eason.
Yes, sir, you've got a couple ordinances in your agenda today, so we thought we'd come back and explain those to you, so that if you had any questions, you'd get an opportunity to pick our brains, what we're thinking.
Thank you, Dave, and Mike, we're glad to have you.
Thank you. Great to be with you all this afternoon. I'm going to be very brief, but let me start with a little background to the changes that are being proposed, the open-air cafe program. First of all, in 19, about 1993, City Council approved the open-air cafe program to enhance the outdoor dining and encourage restaurants in the resort area to provide upscale dining experience. The cafe program was never intended to allow for an extension of a restaurant's ABC or support self-service restaurants. Over the years, City Council's approved modifications to city's cafe guidelines to maintain the intent of the program and adjust for changing needs of the resort. Today's request is no different. In fact, I was here back in February with changes to this cafe program already, and so today is just another modification of that. I'm going to point out one section that we're asking to modify, and it's highlighted in the very center here, but these, this is basically the overall requirement for a restaurant to have a franchise or to get a franchise approved. And if, I'm going to read you the very, the middle sentence that says, "A franchise for these cafes will only be granted to those restaurants located on private property with 80% or more interior space dedicated to tables and chairs for sit-down waiter and waitress service." This is one of those requirements where we wanted to accommodate upscale restaurants, and to, again, enhance the dining experience. So, let me give you an example of what I'm talking about when I talk about cafes. There are 56 open-air cafes in the resort area alone. This just happens to be one of them, I picked it because probably everybody's been to Waterman's, it's a great place to have dinner, and if you've been inside, you understand when you walk in that basically what you see in interior are tables and chairs. It's designed as a restaurant, and what the city is allowing is the building wall on both sides is the propping line, and this is actually, this is considered a boardwalk cafe, and everything on this side is considered a connector park cafe. So, they're entitled to two cafes, both of those being no larger than an inner square foot. So, moving forward, we've had a request for a cafe at 27th Street and the Boardwalk, called Ocean 27 Cafe. The cafe they're requesting, and I'll give you a little more detail about it, is here, is half-circle area where you're going to have nice planting beds, which is similar to some other cafes you'll find around the 34th and 35th Street area, and then a small elongated cafe, which is eight feet wide by 100 feet long here, or 800 square foot. So, this and this, this will be 800 square foot, and this will be 100 square foot. The difference between this, and this was never anticipated when council or the staff or the Resort Adviser Commission thought about this, but this is going to be an entirely outdoor restaurant. The only part that's going to be indoors is the kitchen, which is this area here. That was never anticipated, and if you go back to the section of the code, according to our discussions with the attorney's offices, this couldn't be allowed because of that 80% interior space. So, here's all we're proposing to do, and I'm going to focus in again on this particular section here, and that is 80% interior or exterior. The rest of the changes here are recommendations from the attorneys to basically better define the intent of this section of the code, but that's all we're asking for here, is just to add the exterior. So, for example, this is actually the second restaurant, the shack on 8th Street is very similar, it's all outdoors, and we see these becoming very popular, so we want to make sure we keep up with the changes and that the code, the open-air cafe franchise keeps up with those changes. So, that's the purpose of this, would be to change that to exterior, and just some other grammatical changes to the rest of this section of the cafe guidelines. So, with that, that's it in a nutshell.
Questions or comments, John Moss?
Could you map to see how many properties in the resort, the district which supplies, would be eligible for this particular change that we're making?
This would be the only one, sir.
So, in the whole, there's no other, so this is a one-of-grant?
Like I said, the majority of other, this is a quite risky venture of having a totally outdoor restaurant, because you're subject to rain.
I understand, but this is a, so no other property or parcel can meet this configuration, so we're doing a one-of-one?
Not this particular point. Now, there may be a time where somebody may elect to have part of the cafe on their private property, and then ask for an extension onto public property as well, that would cover that as well.
So, this isn't just private property, this means also public property?
The franchises for the portion of the enterprise on public property?
Correct.
My last question, this isn't something that's in red, but I'm just curious, because I always look at when people are imposing, why is non, and I wasn't here at the time, but why are non-disposable items prohibited? Why are we deciding here what the marketplace should do in terms, what was the logic behind that?
The logic was that the conditions of the guidelines have always been it'll never support a fast-food restaurant. So, differentiation would be a fast-food restaurant uses disposable, we wanted, the intent of the rack was, we wanted plates, silverware, napkins, not paper towels.
I have been in cafes in urban areas where the people come out, and your sandwich in a cafe that wasn't a cheap sandwich was on a paper plate, that was a glass cup, or was a dessert, and I'm just curious, as you go to more of these outdoor things, I think you're going to see people come back and ask about that, because it seems like it drives an expense that may not be worthwhile. It's like someone decided arbitrarily you couldn't have pink tables, and they just made that. I'm just curious, and I know the explanation, but I find it to be the logic lacking, but thank you.
John Moss?
Well, I mean, the other issue there, too, is that, you know, these are outdoor areas, and it's a pretty windy situation, and so, you know, you're a lot less likely to lose a cloth napkin and silverware than you are if you're going to have plastic disposable stuff, and so, you know, or the trash component.
I'm going to sit in here, I'll tell you all this.
I am, yes, sir.
Okay, is there anyone object?
No.
Good deal. Thank you.
There's stuff on plastic, and they sit outside.
Thanks, Michael. Mike, thanks for coming down. Okay.
We don't control that.
National Flood Insurance Programs.
Yes, sir.
Community Rating System.
Yes, sir, I've got Whitney Mattmeyer, who is our Environmental Planner in our Planning and Community Development Department, and Whitney got this assignment when we formulated our sea level rise and our recurrent flooding...
You've got a pretty important assignment, young lady.
And she's been hard at work, and she is prepared to hand me a letter that would allow us to initiate the FEMA visit and all the other things that come along, and I thought you ought to have an update, especially with the news that our sister city Norfolk has got another incremental increase to their ratings based on their investments in stormwater, and I think we're going to come online very soon, once FEMA gives us their review, and so Whitney's going to tell us about that.
Whitney, we're glad to have you.
Thank you. So, y'all may remember last year, I gave you a briefing about a year ago, introducing you to the program, and discussing some of the constraints of the program, as well as the benefits of joining the program. So, I'm going to review a little bit of that information today, and then walk through where we are and where we have to go. So, just as background, we do participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. It was created in 1968 to help provide a means for property owners, renters, and business owners to protect themselves of flooding, since flood insurance is not part of your homeowner's insurance package. In return for providing flood insurance, the participating local governments must agree to adopt and enforce a floodplain ordinance, regulating development in areas prone to flooding as based off of the FEMA flood maps. As we're all aware, that doesn't necessarily cover every area prone to flooding, but it gives us a good baseline to start with. We joined the program in 1971, we were one of the first communities to join. We currently have a little over 22,000 policies, over $6 billion in insurance coverage, and our residents are paying over $12 million a year in flood insurance premiums. We have the highest number of policies in the Commonwealth, and we're the second highest in FEMA Region 3, only behind Ocean City, Maryland. So, to help offset that cost of their flood insurance premiums, FEMA created the Community Rating System in 1990 to help provide some flood insurance policyholders discounts on their premiums, in exchange for things local governments were doing above and beyond the minimums FEMA required for participation. I say some policyholders, that's for policyholders in the mapped special flood hazard areas or high-risk flood zones. Some of our residents, about half of them, have what's called a preferred risk policy. They're the ones that aren't in the mapped high-risk flood zone, they're outside of that area, but choose to carry flood insurance, recognizing that they may still have a risk of flooding. Participation in the CRS is a voluntary program, and that's why we are here before you tonight, and there are 18 activities in four broad categories that allow you to get points in this program, divided into public information, so that's your community outreach, the ways we're engaging with the public, mapping and regulations, so maintaining our flood maps, contributing data to our flood maps, as well as higher standards such as our two feet of freeboard that we have. Flood damage reduction, that can be anything from our capital improvement stormwater programs, on down to houses that have been elevated through public or private funding. And then flood warning and response, how are we getting information of flooding out to our residents? Communities earn points for undertaking activities in each of those categories. So, every 500 points earns a 5% discount. Each time you go up 500 points, you gain a new class. At a 5% discount, we're looking at about a half a million dollars that our residents would save. At a 15%, they'd see about a million dollars in savings. We are hoping to be able to join at a Class 8, which would be that 10% discount, we're shooting for somewhere between 5% and 10% to begin with. We're hoping through the efforts of stormwater programs, through the Dewberry Study, and some of the things that are helping us take a more comprehensive look at how we're responding to flooding in the city, we'll be able to move up. However, it should be noted that progression above a Class 6 would most likely be difficult and take a significant undertaking on the city's part. The last time I was here, the biggest holdup was the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Because of the number of repetitively flooded properties that we have, which we have over 600, we have to have what's called a floodplain management plan to participate in the Community Rating System. The Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan typically will count. We were waiting on that new plan to be adopted, just to make sure. It was adopted this past spring, it has been reviewed, and it has been deemed as a FEMA-compliant plan, so at this point, we have a plan that will work. In that plan, there's the regional plan, and then each city in the plan has their own chapter with action items. We have 16 different action items in our plan, ranging from strengthening city infrastructure, especially looking at a critical infrastructure, stormwater management, our floodplain management program, education outreach, open space, things along those lines. And part of what those action items are used for is when there is a disaster that comes through or federal money is made available, those action items help guide what grants we're applying for and what funds we're able to receive. They also help us develop a program as we move forward to help reduce flooding in the city. So, what are our next steps? We are ready to send our letter of interest to FEMA saying we want to join the Community Rating System. Once that letter of interest is received, they have indicated they would like to do a new community assistance visit, which is where FEMA comes in with the state, they review our program, it's essentially an audit of our program, to make sure we're upholding our end of the ordinance and enforcing our regulations. Once they've cleared us through that, we can receive a letter of compliance from FEMA, and once we have that letter of compliance, we have six months to officially join and apply for the program. Once we do that, the application can take anywhere between 18 and 24 months, due to scheduling visits, advertisement in the Federal Register, just the bureaucratic process that we have to go through. So, that's where we are, I'm happy to take any questions or provide any more information.
Thank you very much, John.
Two questions, I may. Does the premium reduction only apply to premium policies, or does it apply even to policies that are in low-risk flooding areas?
It does not apply to the policies in those low-risk flooding areas, the mindset being they've already had a reduced rate for being outside the high risk.
Just for the people listening who have those policies, I want to make sure that they know that they would not see a reduction.
No problem. Yeah.
And secondly, of the 600 repetitive losses that you mentioned, have any of them been so repetitive that they qualify under FEMA for the buyout, or have lost their ability to secure flood insurance and little buyouts since they've had repeated losses?
That would be a question for Erin Sutton, but we can certainly follow up and try to get that information for you.
All right, thank you very much, I would like to know that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Barbara?
You mentioned the Dewberry Study. I keep hearing about Dewberry.
Yes.
Can somebody tell me what they're studying?
Yes, ma'am, that's...
I think I did, I'll take that one.
That is a consultant that has completed their damage impact assessment, they are studying the four watersheds, they began with the Lynn Haven watershed, and they are currently in the solution phase of what actions are available to us for mitigating the damages and impacts that they have determined based upon various storm intensities. So, we are prepared to, let's hope by this fall, come forward and provide you a feedback session, an update session, on an overview of the city, and quite candidly, having seen the first pass-through, it's going to be one of those, well, we already know those areas flood, but you're going to see an order of magnitude associated with what the financial impacts are, which is really helps us in the cost-benefit ratio of investing mitigation and corrective actions.
You said they were studying the four watersheds, which you only mentioned Lynn Haven.
Right, the first one that they're doing is the Lynn Haven.
That's the only one we're going to be hearing from in the fall?
Yes, and then they...
But we didn't get to the other ones.
When they finish up the Lynn Haven analysis.
Which would be where? I mean, how long is it going to be?
Oh, we said it was about a three-year effort to get us into the other phases, so they do the overall assessment of the city, and impacts of sea level rise and climate change, if you will, and they're done with that, now they're into the solution phase for the Lynn Haven. Soon as they brief you on that, they'll move on to, I believe, the Elizabeth Rivers, the next one.
We're all going to get to the southern.
Well, eventually, yes, ma'am.
I mean, after a day like yesterday, that's not a good answer. Folks kind of have about all they can put up with. Okay.
Well, I mean, let's talk about the solutions for the southern watershed, and how large that is, and Currituck, and, you know, the water feeding into Back Bay, which is really the water issue that you're dealing with, and you've got a topographic issue that your high ground is considered four feet above sea level, so as we get into the conversation of the southern watershed, it's a most difficult challenge, it's our most difficult challenge, Ms. Henley.
We're going to go blow up Hudson, we've already got a plan.
Okay.
We got a plan.
We have to wait for Dewberry.
Okay.
We got a plan.
I'm very sympathetic, Ms. Henley, to what we're doing, and you know where...
John Moss?
It's fun to share, I shared with Tom Lady, there are drones, there actually is a drone today that does bathymetric measurements using LiDAR sonar, I mean radar, excuse me, that does, that's used to do coastal lines, coastal waterways, depth, sandbars, and it's a drone. So, I mentioned in this is something maybe the region wants to look at, which would enable us to do surveys faster, at a lower cost, and get the digitized data over large groups of property without having to deploy mobile teams. So, I pass that on to Tom today, it's something hopefully to look at, but I do think that's a way to speed up our understanding of what is, and periodically update data, so you cannot just get snapshots, but get sequence snapshots. It may be a process that will allow us to more rapidly progress on documenting what we have.
Very good. Any other comments? Thank you very much for your presentation, young lady.
Whitney?
Okay. Now, Hurricane preparing us, Storm Watcher, Erin Sutton, how in the world are you?
Good.
I propose here in New Orleans.
We welcome you.
Thank you, thank you. So, as you know, I come, I present the hurricane forecast, but remember, it only takes one hurricane. So, the 2017 outlook that we're looking at from the National Hurricane Center in above-normal season, and staying right with that, we have Tropical Storm Brett, and we have Tropical Storm Cindy. Cindy's probably going to cause us some rain this weekend, as it comes through the Gulf and up and around. It'll stay well west of the state, but we're definitely going to get some of the rain bands from that, so. So, we are already at sea, and it's June 20th, so 11 to 17 name storms, five to nine hurricanes, two to four major hurricanes. A forecast is a forecast, it is what it is, but for us, it only takes one. So, this presentation, I wanted to take an opportunity to talk about Know Your Zone. We are, the state took on the updated hurricane evacuation study, we talked, we've talked over the years about the lane reversal and how that's probably not going to work. It will stay in our toolbox, but really talking about hurricanes evacuation zones in a better format. We have always had designated evacuation zones in the city of Virginia Beach, however, we have 49, and that's not easily communicated, and you could live in Zone 11, and you live across the street in Zone 29. So, the, it was not the easiest. So, VDEM has taken this on, and right now, you can go to Know Your Zone... So VDEM has taken this on, and right now, you can go to Know Your Zone, you can type in your address, it'll tell you what zone you're in. And so what this means, so this was our previous, it's kind of hard to see, but we had 32A, 31A, I mean, so it was a very confusing evacuation zone. So we always used our surge zones, which historically would have led to significant over-evacuation. So this is a more, this will help in getting us, it is part of our process in determining evacuations. For us, it went to four zones. They did this for the entire Hampton Roads area, using modeling and surge modeling to really look at directions of storms that will truly affect us. Because we have North Carolina that protects us quite a bit, it really is looking at much better detailed modeling for us. Now, with this information, we will use our internal support with GIS and what we have been working on as a city the last 18 months on modeling specific for Virginia Beach. And we had started almost two years ago, looking at how to reduce our 49 zones, and then VDEM came to us. So we actually had shown VDEM what we were doing, and that's kind of where they picked up and went. So we were ahead of the curve on this process in what our GIS group has been doing. So we're really looking at, A, B, C, D is it, and much more targeted evacuation. So we really are beginning to limit that over-evacuation and also changing the messaging of everybody get out. And everybody get out and go to Roanoke or Kansas, you know, go, you don't have to go 500 miles away, you just need to move to higher ground. So what this is going to do, and we're going to be putting a workshop together in July with our sheltering and our evacuation stakeholders to work through, what this does is we will be moving folks around the city, so we need to augment our shelter capacity. So we'll be updating our sheltering plan and working on some additional information to provide to Mr. Hanson when he's looking at making an evacuation recommendation, that he has all the information, the tides, the precipitation, the surge information. And this becomes a much better way to communicate evacuation. We don't have to get into the details of how we came about that, but instead of trying to communicate, we need 11, 13, 25, and 74 to evacuate. We can look at all As, and it communicates across the entire Hampton Roads region. Yes, sir?
So the C is red, since the color schemes don't exactly match the map.
Yeah, the PowerPoint, yeah.
And so orange is non-evacuate.
So-
I'm just trying to make the scenario matrix match the colors on the map.
And I apologize.
No, it's not your fault. I'm sure it's how it's designed.
So A, B, C, and D, so D, the purple and the pink. So orange, this is C, and this is D.
Oh, okay, wow, I would not have known that from, I'm glad I asked. I thought D was that little purple piece that was kind of over to far left.
So this is Oceana. You can always tell, because Oceanas are high grounds, so that's really what we're looking at. But I'll be putting some more information together, so that you have more. I just wanted to let you know that there is a website now, it has all the fact sheets and much more information on it. I just wanted to introduce it to you. The last thing I wanted to touch on was, it's coming back around from Hurricane Matthew. These were our key themes on lessons learned and that we've been working on these lessons and starting to institute some changes. So I just wanted to update you a little bit on that. So the Emergency Operations Center, obviously, we had some challenges with that. We're in the process, we're going to be changing the layout and working through. We did receive some allocation in the CIP, so we're going to work on the technology upgrade for video teleconferencing, better communication in the EOC, so that's, we're working on now. And also getting into a formal standard operating procedure for the folks that come into the EOC. That becomes one of the biggest issues. People come in and sit in the seat, not very frequently, they forget what they have to do, and the trainings that we have, too much distance, too much time passes, although not this year. But we're going to work through a very structured process in the EOC and begin to provide the training. So I talked about the new evacuation zone, so all the messaging is going on right now. The Army Corps of Engineers is conducting the evacuation study, the behavioral, that is not going to be complete until next year. So this year is kind of the introduction and the ability for us to build our evacuation plan around that and how we communicate with the public. We're going to be having the workshop in January, or in July. We are working through our new damage assessment software that was very helpful in Matthew. We used it again with the tornado, and we are now working through the damage assessment process with Public Utilities, Public Works, and implementing the process. Working through shelter assessments, we had some challenges in Matthew with the shelter that we used, and we're going to be working through reprioritizing our list. Our community recovery centers, we have a draft plan, we're going to finalize that. Working through individual assistance and public assistance training, we kind of were learning as we went through for Matthew, so we've been holding formal trainings with members of multiple departments. And then into the 2018 hurricane season, the completion of both the citywide shelter operations and evacuation plans, the formalization of those, and refining the policies and procedures for a damage assessment. The public outreach, it's under 2018. It's already beginning, obviously, with Know Your Zone and starting to communicate more about flooding, flood insurance education. We've applied for a couple of grants to provide more education and get out in the community a little bit more. And then the goal, having a functional EOC exercise in 2018.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments?
I just tried to go to the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just tried to go to the Know Your Zone. What's the website?
It is KnowYourZoneVA.org, I believe.
Barbara?
We had our good emergency planning session down in the southern part of the city, Senior Center this morning.
Yes, I'm sorry I couldn't make it today.
I appreciate this nice brochure that you all did just for the southern part of the city. It was very well received.
Good, good, good.
And so forth. Communication is the key, and we really appreciate all that you all have been doing. In this flyer, this fact sheet on the Know Your Zone, I take, by putting everything in the southern part of the city in Zone A really hurt the credibility, because, you know, the ridge, is it the same thing as, you know, the other end? And I said, well, this doesn't make sense. So just to give you that feedback, because it is hard to explain.
Well, so I will tell you, because the cities had input on, so when we got the original one, we had dots all through the southern area of the city. That's extremely hard to communicate. That gets back to the Year End 11 and across the street is 42. Year on A and year across the street in B. So we made the southern end of the city blue to communicate the evacuation information. We know that there are areas that are higher, we understand that, but the way that the map had turned out with the various A, B, C, and D became more complicated to communicate. So this is a tool for communicating the areas that we're issuing notices of evacuation.
Like I say, the credibility was a lead balloon.
John Moss.
In that regard, since census tract data align with precincts, that's a requirement, and everybody knows what precinct they voted in, you might want to think about how the precincts lie, because it gives you a greater granularity, and if you voted X or whatever, precincts might give you a little bit better granularity that will allow you to communicate and also to a reference that people know. That's just a thought. But my, before you ask that question, to maybe think of that, I was thinking of, in terms of the stuff that are in our highest category, which is D, would me, it would look like those would be places that if we have elementary schools or schools that already do not have substantial power generation that's greater than the load for the building itself, but could support other ancillary things going on in that building, whether it be staging for rescue support or whatever, that we would be looking at those buildings for that. And if we were doing modifications at all in those buildings, we might want to raise some part of that building to a category standard that equals the non-evacuation standard. I can't, I think we do like category two, but there might be merit in selected locations to change our standard for buildings that are in those higher zones, so that you could operate and have places you could operate out of or people could get to during those types of events. I know that's a long-term strategy, but it would be things working in the back of my mind as we're looking at doing things already, then the marginal costs might be within the doable, but I think, and that may help us, but points may not.
And that's where the shelter assessment is coming, yeah.
I just know elementary schools that are in those red zones that don't have that kind of stuff, that's why I was asking.
All right, other questions or comments? I do. In evacuation-wise, this appears to be based on water and not wind. Am I reading this right?
You are correct.
Now, I'm a little old beach guy, that wind scares me as much as water, probably more than water.
Shouldn't, water is more dangerous.
Because, you know, my roof gets torn off. I'm not worried about flooding where I live. I am worried to death about my roof coming off.
Yes.
And stuff like that.
And that's part of what we're, it's part of what we're working through with, and that was the conversation that we had with Mr. Hanson, is this is a piece, and this is a communications tool. We can educate people on A, B, C, D, but there are more factors. There's wind speed, wind direction, tides, surge is a piece of it, precipitation, and that's what we're working on developing with this tool, developing a better matrix to take all of that into account when we communicate the areas that we're going to evacuate or recommend evacuation to. So yes, this is only a piece of the puzzle.
In that point, I was watching one of these late-night shows, because I'm a night owl, but it was a science program, and the guy was talking about storms. And Matthew says, to your point about wind debris or debris and water, and he said, your best defense, since most people are not going to be able to evacuate, he says, is a first-class life jacket and a motorcycle helmet. Because most people that are killed, generally speaking, it's something that's caused them to be unconscious, first strike to the head, and then they drown. He said, so if you're looking for protection, you got to evacuate, and you got to evacuate in place or survive in place, he said, life jacket and motorcycle helmet.
I'll take those home tonight to Deb, she's going to say, what am I doing?
I just thought I'd share that tidbit.
There's a magic compact helmet.
That's a great point.
Councilman Moss, did you have a flood insurance question?
It is a very good point.
I did, it got answered earlier. I was just making the point that the premium reductions, because many people like myself have flood insurance, but we're in a low-risk zone.
Right.
They will see no benefit from the points we make, because they're not going to get a further discount. And many people seeing that might have thought, oh, my policy's going to go down. I want to make sure if they were watching, they would know theirs would not.
Yes, yep.
Any other questions, Erin? Thank you very much.
I wish you would.
Appreciate it very much. Internal Financial Reports, Patty.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
I've got Don Barnett and Kevin here to-
We welcome all y'all, as usual. Thank you for the great job you do keeping this money straight.
You all should have received in your package on Friday, the full financial report that has information on all the city's many funds. We're going to focus here today on the general fund. And we're talking about the fund revenues and expenses, just like we do every month. And the chart that really tells the full story through May, out of a billion, $68 million revenue budget, we have $877 million through the end of May. And expenditures, a billion, $123.8 million expenditure budget, we have spent a little over a billion dollars. And the difference in the two is, of course, money from fund balance. Our chart on the revenue side, we are right where we need to be. We're actually slightly ahead, and of course, that's probably for some timing differences. We're at 82.1% and our normal trend is 80.1. So we're right where we need to be. We still have $191 million to collect before we finish the year out, but I want to point out, as of today, we have, we have less than 90 million to collect. So, you know, the big thing will be the state money and some of our other taxes coming in, but our revenues are coming in very well. Real estate taxes, we collected in the month of June, the numbers that you see in our financial statements through the end of May through June, we've collected another 71 million on real estate. And business license, we have met budget pretty much, or exceeded it as of now. Personal property, we had 61 million at the end of May, we've collected another 31 million. So as you'll see in a few minutes, we're going to exceed budget on all those major revenue And we're going to go through just some of the major revenue items. And remember, the blue in the prior years is the annual money we've collected, the gray is as of the May 31st of each year, and the orange is the current year budget and where we are, 437 million down here. I've got the real estate tax accounts for some of these differences. And I think that what we're saying on, I've memorized most of this, but the real estate, we should be 1 to 2 million over budget. Personal property, this is an annual tax, and so you see that this is where people started paying their bill through the end of May. We've collected another 31 million as of today, so we've almost achieved budget today. This is, will exceed budget probably 4 to 5 million. We've said many times, this is the most difficult one to project. General sales tax, our trend line is right across here, exactly where it needs to be. We are up 2.1% from the prior year. We're doing, doing fine on that, although we will not make budget. We are collecting more than we collected last year on this revenue item. Business license tax, actual, we've actually exceeded budget through the end of May, and of course, we continue to collect on that. So we have exceeded it by, we probably will exceed it by about a million dollars. Hotel room taxes is always of interest. This is the 2% general fund share of the 8% hotel room tax. We are at 6.4 million out of a 6.7 million budget. We have more money to collect, but see, we're at 96% of our budget, the highest of any across the trend line, so we should, we should exceed budget by about $250,000, $500,000. And the general fund on the citywide hotel, pretty much the same story, 29.7 million collected out of a 31 and a half million budget. And just to remind you, that includes the additional $1 room night that began last January, you know, for the arena infrastructure. Restaurant meal tax, the general fund portion only, that's 3 and 1/2% of the total of 5 and 1/2, 37.8 million, or 91 and 1/2%. Also, one of the highest of the trend lines there, we should make budget, I'm thinking, by a small amount. This chart, which I know, whoa, this is citywide hotel meal tax, 59.4 versus the 64.9, so we fully expect to make budget or exceed it. This chart is just to give you an idea of where we think we will be at year-end. We've got the budget for our major revenue items, where we are, and where we think we'll be compared to budget by year-end, and we're putting it right around 5 million. It'll be between 4 and 6 million over budget on the general fund. Turning now to expenditures, we've spent a little over a billion on our trend line. We are looking good. This is where less is good. We're less on our trend line. Here's where all our expenditures are. We think we, our expenditures will be 24 to 26 million under budget. I like to show this chart to show that we collect money a lot different than when we spend it, and we still need to bring these together. The dashboard, we are still projecting about a 10.37% fund balance, 10.37% of next year's revenues, so it'd be somewhere between 115, 120 million dollar fund balance. This reflects, includes all the reservations for all the things council have used for next year that you adopted in your budget. Capital- Capital, capital projects, for example, for the CIP, twenty-three and a half million has already been reserved out before we get to this. There we are. End of fiscal year is officially August eleventh. Close out. We'll have unaudited information for you in October, and of course, the audit in December.
Thank you, Patty. I have a question. I believe you said our expenditures are twenty-four point six million dollars below budget.
Right.
Does that include us going in and having to take money out for like Hurricane Matthew and stuff? I mean, I'm trying to follow you there.
Yes, yes.
That's in excess of that?
Right, but we budgeted for that. We took money out of fund balance for that. That, that is reflected in that twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-six million under budget on expenditures in total.
Correct. My point to you is that it net free up of that amount of money.
Right. We are not reflecting any reimbursements from FEMA at this stage.
Because I'd necessarily had to get a different reserves in our last council meeting to balance things from the police department, if I recall.
Right. We had to move, move some money. Yes, that reflects all of that.
Thank you. Yes, John?
This won't be a surprise to anyone, but I'm going to come back and talk to, but I'll be on page eighteen of the full report. Because I'm going to continue to highlight this issue. And I hope in the next fiscal year that this report can line up and show our accrued accounting system, so it actually reflects the pay system versus the calendar, because that would make these numbers more accurate.
Wait, 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 uh...
Because these all work by the month, and since we now have a new payroll system, either this chart about payroll expenditures needs to be...
But our projections reflect all of that.
Well, last time I mentioned this, you said, take into account the fact that this doesn't...
Well, I was doing that for your benefit. When we do the projections, we reflect all of that.
Okay. All right. I want to go back to page nineteen, page eighteen, excuse me. So, if you look at the end of the year and you take the, and I realize this is somewhat of an estimate, so I'll take that.
Right, right.
But if you take the year-to-date actual expenditures and you divide that by eleven, and I realize there's some margin of error there.
Yeah.
But probably not more than ten percent, I wouldn't think.
Right.
And then you annualize that, and then you look forward and then multiply that by twelve and do that for fringe and benefits. And you take ninety percent of that amount to account for the payroll differences. That's twenty million, seven hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, five hundred ninety-six of under-execution salaries. And that's about seven point two million dollars of un-executed benefits, taking into account all the transfers and all the things we've done to date.
Hey, Mr. Moss, on page, on tab three, section E, on the third page, I've got the sal, all the fringe benefits, salaries and personnel costs projected out for the year.
Right. I just, yeah, I was just doing this rough estimate, just to get it roughly right for order of magnitude, but I can come back and talk.
Okay.
But it's roughly, you're talking at least twenty-five million dollars between salaries and fringe benefits.
Right.
That's almost, that's just over four and a half cents of the real estate tax rate that we are consistently in this year and have been doing continually over time, taxing people. There is a cost to that. This is taking into account all the surge, snow removals, all the overtime for all those things.
Right, right.
And at the end, we are over-budgeting, which means we are over-taxing relative to the requirement for which we are appropriating the money. That doesn't mean at the end of the year, we don't put to good purposes. I'm not saying that. But we are appropriating money consistently over time in excess of the requirement for which the funding has been appropriated.
Uh, let, let me just add to that, that the twenty-three and a half million dollars that you're cash funding capital projects next year would have to be eliminated or would have to have revenues in the next year to cash fund projects.
Understand all that, but we've never had a conscientious, detailed business case analysis that establishes why we have a higher use as government to be, and not just appropriated for that purpose then, you know? But we're appropriating it for one thing and using it for something else. I don't deny that the use is legitimate.
Right.
But we aren't having the budget discussion about the appropriation for the purpose. We're having a debate, appropriating it for a purpose for which we never appropriated or expended for. That's my point. We should be having a discussion about why it is and how much it is. I'm not saying take it all, because there has to be some, has to be some factor there. So, I understand that. But we are, we should be having a debate, Mr. Mayor, about that and then appropriating it for the purpose and telling the public, yes, you're paying a tax so that we don't have to go out and do revenue anticipation note borrowing, which other communities have to do. So, Patty, your point's right on target. I don't deny that. I'm just talking about the integrity of the appropriation process itself. And there is an integrity problem with the way we do it.
Well, I, I know that the agencies consider we have a lot of integrity here in the way we manage our finances, and they are, that is the strength of our rating.
We talk about it at the budget time every year, John, because you do a great job of bringing it up, and I do a great job of disagreeing with you.
All I can tell you is other communities have AAA bond ratings and don't do this.
Okay.
Fairfax is...
We're both right. Okay. So, that's great. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. City Council comments. Great Bobby Dyer.
Oh, thank you. If you don't mind, I'd like to express a little bit of a frustration and make a serious recommendation. A number of weeks ago, Chief Jay Cox invited us over to see a movie called Fallen. And it was a nationally dumb movie on what law enforcement goes through every day. And it was graphic, it was telling, it was sobering. A number of law enforcement people being killed, being beaten with actual film of it. And it was really, uh, you know, we, I always kind of knew what law enforcement did, but when you see the real dark side of it, you know, it's, you know, it, it's an awakening. And then recently, we had a police officer shot. And then even with the incident that went on in Alexandria where law enforcement had to step up. And the bottom line is, in the city of Virginia Beach, which is regarded, say, for a reason, we have outstanding police, we have outstanding sheriffs, we have outstanding fire people that twenty-four seven put themselves into hard harms way. And I guess, you know, we talk a lot about it. I guess, you know, right now, I'm getting ready to start my fourteenth year on this council. And, you know, we've always talked about the salary compression. We always said it's a priority, but we really need to do something about it going forward. So, I'm going to request that the city manager somewhere, whether we bring it up at the retreat or we have a special workshop on it. Now, some would say it's an expensive fix, and I respectfully say we can't afford not to fix it. And I think going forward, if we're going to, you know, recognize the brave men and women that serve us twenty-four seven. And I'm not saying this at the mutual exclusion of all employees, but the point is, we live in very, very dangerous times. And, you know, I would encourage anybody to see that movie Fallen. I would encourage people to do a drive-along, you know, neither with our police, fire. And we also include the sheriff's department. They work in a very dangerous, hostile environment twenty-four seven, keeping us safe. So, I really think that the time of rhetoric is, you know, past, and I think it's time that we start taking some proactive action. We have ways of coming up for money when we need it, and I think this should be one of our highest priorities. And thank you for letting me vent a bit.
Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate it very much. John?
I just want to make a comment, because I made it before, but I just want to reiterate it so people are clear. I believe that this town hall process during the summertime in a resort community to engage the public on city hall replacement is not the appropriate time to be doing that. And secondly, I don't think that we've had the workshop. I thought we were going to have the further discussions and talk about what the issues were before we engaged the public. And I think that we are making a strategic misstep to not have done more homework among ourselves before going out to engage the public. Didn't they make some good points about things we ought to know that we don't now know or don't have to discuss? So, I'm just making my point that I think this layout plan that we have is premature, not, not needed. I'm not saying it isn't needed. But our, our proposal to move out is premature, in my opinion, and I think we're going to, because of that, haste makes waste. And I think we will regret getting it out ahead of ourselves. And we certainly need a more objective look at some of the proposals than we're here to fore every seat. That's just, I want to lay that out there so people know where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Yeah, and, and really, I do echo a lot with Mr. Moss says, and as a matter of fact, I think one of the main things that we want to get a rollout, I believe it's this Monday, is to explain to people what the problem is. I think before we do anything moving, moving forward, we got to do that. And I expressed, you know, you know, similar concerns with the city manager. And I think there's an agreement, an agreement if we need more meetings beyond the summer, we're going to do that. We have a, we also have a retreat coming up and everything, but, and, yeah, but once again, I just, you know, emphasize, and I think, Mr. Moss, and I think we all agree that, you know, that the council has to show a strong direction in this regard going forward and do what's right for the right reasons. But I think essential mission one is to explain to the public what the problems with building one are. And, you know, so there's, there's a foundation to move forward as to what, what's necessitating all this. So, John, I, I do agree with you.
Thank you very much, Bobby.
Let me interject if I may on this subject, because I totally agree with what you just said, that, but I think the city manager totally agrees with you too, because we've had this conversation. You know, first of all, does the problem exist with this building to the extent as it's being represented? And I believe one of your first things is to get, you're even going to have tours to bring citizens through this facility. Am I misrep...
Oh, we're going to start out with a video. We've been recording throughout the week. We started yesterday, today. And we're going to, we're going to try and put together a decent, so that more volume of people can see that posted online. And we're going to do a trial run on Monday and see how it's received and see if it gets the point across.
Bobby, I think you're right, because, you know, no way are we going to get a good discussion on what to do until if people buy off on the problem at hand. And, you know, that, that's got to be decided first. Now, since everyone's brought it up, I'll throw another thing on the table. What the heck? And I kind of bounced it off you not too long ago. What's wrong with going out with a RFP to the community for any location, any builder, bringing your proposal, your idea? I don't see a downside of that, folks. And I welcome that, and it becomes totally open to everybody. But again, I, I, I put it on the table. It seems to me the most, more people involved and showing interest in the project would be a benefit to the citizens of Virginia by the cost being reduced. So, one might have a better idea for a location than what we have put on the table. But it just seems to me, a RFP for a new city hall and the information's out there that was presented publicly, the report from the architects has to, you know, and they could all look at that and work off of it.
My only suggestion on that would be is, if first, let's have a discussion of determination. Are there six people who are at least willing to consider moving city hall from municipal complex? Because if that's not the case, for good reasons or not, then the RFP would be less meaningful. So, that's my point about having a discussion. I've made it very clear, I'm not interested in moving it, so I would consider that to be a non-productive activity. But six of my peers may think it's a good idea. I'm just saying...
But could you be fair to me and say, I really don't know. I'd like to see all the options.
If there's six people agree with, Bobby agree with you, we should spend the time and effort. But that's only if six people are open to do that, and if they're not, we shouldn't. If there are, we should. But that's a discussion in of itself.
Bobby?
Yeah, I think it would behoove us. We're going to have the first meeting on Monday. You know, that would be a good way to gauge a temperature, what's going on. But I really think, would it be in our council's best interest to have a workshop on this even next week? You know, to talk about, you know, what we're, what we're talking about.
Say first meeting. You're talking about your committee.
Monday, you know, the first, we're meeting Monday.
Public information meeting, Building Nineteen, six to eight o'clock.
I don't think it's a good place to do it.
Yeah.
And start, start the engagement to figure out, hey, look, this is a big decision on y'all, and my job is to make sure that a hundred percent transparency is going on and that the public gets a chance to see what the issues are, gets a chance to ask questions, and, and we'll build on the information flow over the next hundred days. And when we come out of the summer, we will have conducted three major public information meetings. And as Mr. Dyer said, if you all want more meetings, it's your decision for the next fifty years. So, I'm, I'm here with staff to accommodate all ideas and to present all ideas. And I'll be honest with you, since, since the conversation got opened, my phone has rang several times with some other ideas, one of which I can honestly say, we as staff did not consider it, and it has merit.
Well, that plays into the RFP process.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll put that on the table Monday.
Yeah, well, like I, you know, suggest that we, we'll get a good temperature on Monday, at least, you know, what's going on and what it might be. But if we can schedule a workshop and discussion among ourselves.
Well, let's get it done.
To deliberate. And maybe if we can do that next Tuesday, if we can get that on for next Tuesday.
I'm good.
We'll have feedback from the night before.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, any other comments? They've been good.
Oh, can I make up one quick one? And this is a really good one. A couple of weeks ago, I got a phone call on a weekend...
You said you had to make it up?
It's fake news.
Fake news.
All for no facts.
You know, at Kemp's Landing Park, you know, our new little park there, you know, we have a stranding pond. And I got a phone call from some animal rights people, folks, that ducklings were falling, you know, going into the pond. They were getting under the fence. The adults were going in, and they were drowning in the stranding pond. And a group of really good, engaged people, they took some bamboo curtains and fashioned a ramp. Channel thirteen came and showed a bunch of ducklings going up this makeshift ramp and everything. Our twenty-four seven city manager was contacted by yours truly on the weekend. And recently, for a cost of eighty dollars, Parks and Rec erected a permanent ramp right there, you know, very, you know, at a very minimal cost that really is taking care of the problem. This doesn't seem like a lot, but there were some folks in the community really concerned about this. And, you know, it's a total win-win situation. It's a total great response by management and city staff, and I thank you.
That's why we're the greatest city in the world. All right. Any other? Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, do your magic for me, please.
Help me, Lord.
Ordinances and resolutions. Anybody have any comments on any of that?
You got me down wrong.
Do you have my extension as well?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Is everything okay with ordinances and resolutions? All right. Under planning, Titan Investment Group, I'm okay with it. Item two, Adventure Works, Inc., Beach District, John. You okay?
No issues.
Item three, Ocean Bay Homes, Beach District, John.
Again, no issues either.
Item four, Connie L. Hebert, Connie and Anthony Hebert, Rose Hall. Anybody have a problem? Item five, ordinance to amend, paragraph eleven, two oh three, two thirty, nine oh one, so forth, concerning parking required, conditional requirements, establish conditional use, craft wineries. Everybody okay? Item six, ordinance to amend the two thousand sixteen conference plan document concerning identification of Seapine Station and amend the reference book. Everybody okay?
I do have a question. The, we don't have any speakers on the offshore. I'll make a point of that, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Can you do it in less than thirty seconds?
Less than thirty seconds, but I can do it less than three minutes.
I'm still happy. Thank you. You did your magic, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm very appreciative. The chair will entertain a motion. Do we need both security? Okay, okay. The chair will entertain a motion to recess it to a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two point two dash three seven one one A. Code of Virginia is meant for the following purposes. Security matters, discussion reports and plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building or structure, or the safety of persons using such facility, building or structure pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A nineteen. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration or interviews and perspective...
Personnel matters, discussion consideration for interviews and prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, displanning, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Have a motion.
Send a motion.
Second. A motion second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Abbott, Mr. Davenport.
Aye.
Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Hearn.
Aye.
Mrs. Moss.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Aye. We're going to recess to 5:20.
Got it.